So my plan for today is we will do the practice midterm that was posted. And then we will finish up the last, the last half, more than the last half. Like the chapter four questions that from the practice from the textbook that I haven't finished yet. So that's kind of the plan. So the, the, the practice midterm probably won't take that long. And then the, the, the other questions will, will take the rest of the time. We won't be able to finish all of them probably. So does it sound good with everybody? It's good. Is that a plan? I don't know. How many of you have already done the practice midterm? That's the, that's everything I have, I'm worried about. Has everybody already done the practice midterm or not many people? There's a chat that you can talk in or you can unmute. There's a chat, I guess, empty four 10 questions. Is that the chat? Yusuf is right, something?
Yeah.
Four 10 questions. Four 10 questions. So you know, if you want at any point, you can put, you can type in there. Or of course, anybody can unmute. And, and if you have any particular questions you want me to do, feel free to put them in that chat. Empty four 10 questions. But it looks like nobody has questions so far, so it's fine. Then if there's no, no, I don't know, nothing wrong, everybody's good to go. Then I will start with the final, the midterm practice that was given to us from, I guess, 2017. So yeah, let's give it a try. So let's take a look here. Question one we have. Again, I guess I'll leave that chat open. There we go. So the cumulative distribution function of a random variable X is given as follows. So we know we have a random variable. We have a cumulative distribution function. So what exactly like, does that mean? Right? It's going to be cumulative just means it's all the probabilities up to some probability. So when we have other examples, I'll, I'll show a little table. I have a little table that shows the different versions. There's a lot of words. So all we're saying here is that, you know, the, it's a piecewise defined function like this. We have two constants A and B, which we don't know, right? And then we have to determine if X is a discrete or continuous random variable and briefly explain. So it's, the way you decide this is basically you look and you say, is this going to be a continuous function? If this is a continuous function, then it's going to be a continuous random variable. But if we were to graph this function, right? This function F here. So if we have capital F X like this, let me make the pen size bigger. And here we have X, right? Then at one eighth, we have a jump or we have something. We have at one, one quarter, we have something. And then at three eighths, we have something like this. So if X is less than one eighth, it's zero, right? If X is between one eighth and one quarter, it's some value A, right? So already I'm showing this as some sort of discontinuity, but I'll, I'll explain in a second. And then between one quarter and three eighths, it's some sort of B. And then afterwards, it's just some one, some value one, right? And very discontinuous. Technically, we don't know that there's a discontinuity here. Because this could be flat and this could be flat, but we do know that there's a discontinuity at one over four. So as long as there's just somewhere a discontinuity, then, then it's going to be a discrete random variable. So the answer is discrete because specifically we know there's a, there's a jump at, at one quarter. Cause it goes from A to B as our function. That's kind of it. It's a little bit of a confusing one, just because it's like, it's not super, it's not like find the probability or something. It's just sort of think about the function. So definitely discrete. So I'll write that here. Find the probability that X is less than or equal to 0.5. That's exactly the definition of what we use this function for, right? So that's exactly F of 0.5. And so if we just look at what that's going to be, F of 0.5 is a half, right? So I guess it's a half is between, yeah, three eighths, three eighths is smaller than a half. So it's going to be above this, so it's just going to be one there. That's really all there is for that. It's just, it's just remembering if three eighths is bigger or smaller than a half. So there's, there's that. Okay, that's it for part B. Part C, I will just keep going until someone has a question or anything like that. Feel free to ask. So for these particular values of A and B, find the probability that X equals one eighth and the expected value of X. So if I look at the function here, we know that basically what we know is that in this graph now. Okay, it's not gonna, let me just copy that. I'll just do this and then delete. Basically, what we know, there's our F. We know that this is now, instead of these random values, we know this is one third and this is one, two thirds. Right, two thirds, yeah. So then our line here goes, can I erase that? There you go. There, there, and there. So that's our actual function now. And then we want the probability that X is equal to one eighth. So the probability that X, just write this here, yeah. The probability that X is equal to one eighth, right? Well, it's not exactly going to be, it's not exactly, so it's not equal to F of one eighth, right? Because this is if we had, you know, X is less than equal to one eighth, right? It's kind of like accumulating all the values up to one eighth. But we want the actual exact probability at one eighth. And all that's going to be is it's going to be the jump discontinuity at one eighth. It's whatever this jump is, right? So whatever that jump is, is going to be your probability at one eighth. And so that's a third, right? So there we go. There's a way to write that as a limit, but I guess I'll just write it like this. It's just going to be the jump. So yeah, that's, that's all it is. When you have the, when you have the discrete one, then you have that there. That's it really. And then if I, if I wanted to find the probability of like, you know, probably that X equals, I don't know, something like this value here, right? There's no jump there, right? So there would be no probability, there'd be zero, that is there, especially for a discrete one. Or I guess, yeah, that it's exactly that, it's equal to that, yeah, it would be just here. Okay, that's all for question one. So again, there's a chat, empty four 10 questions. If anybody has questions, let me know, or you can just unmute. Otherwise, I'll just keep going. Question two. Let X be a continuous uniform random variable over the interval negative two to two. Determine the value of X such that this and this. So draw the graph for the PDF and consider the area between negative X and X. So that, that's what I'm going to do basically. This before, the reason I'm saying just this and this, because it doesn't really make sense until I draw a picture. So we have a continuous uniform random variable over some interval. So what that means is I have my probability distribution, which I'll just draw as these two lines. And it is continuous, which means it's just some sort of rectangle, which goes from negative two to two. I guess I'll actually draw negative two to two. And it has some sort of value, right? What value is this? What is this probability? Which means, you know, the, the probability of each individual thing, well, I guess, like, the total probability of this rectangle has to be one, right? Cause that's the whole point. The integral of like all possible states has to be one. So that means there's only one possible answer for this top here. You can do this with like a complicated way, or you can just say, well, whatever this height is, for, for a uniform one, it's, it's not that hard to just sort of like work it out. So the area of this, if I call this height, let's just call this H here. And this length here is four, right? So H times four has to equal one, because the, the area of this rectangle has to be one. So H is a quarter. So we know this height here has to be a quarter. One over four there. And again, it's just because whenever you have a probability distribution, the integral of the whole thing has to be one. So that we just have a rectangle, so the area of the rectangle has to be one. So we have that. So there we go. That's just how you figure out that. So now that we know this, we can figure out some other things. We want to determine the value of X such that the probability of, of capital X being between negative X and X is 0.9, right? So what we can do is let's just say this is our, let's just say this is our negative X and X, right? X definitely has to be between, between negative two and two. And so we know that the probability that capital X is between negative X and X equals 0.9, which means the integral from negative X to X, right? Of our function, our F of X, DX equals 0.9. Oops, don't know why I said that. And we know our function. That's why I had to find the one quarter. I know the function, so it's negative X to X of one quarter, DX equals 0.9. And you would just use this equation to solve for X here. One way you could do this to make it a little easier is since it's symmetrical, you could just say this is two. So, so we're looking for this integral, right? We're looking for this integral here. Well, that integral, this, this area, so that area is the same as two times this area, right? So we could also just say, just, it'll make the calculations a little bit easier. It's just the integral from zero to X of one quarter DX, but times two, we have two of them. And that's equal to 0.9. And this, it's a little easier to solve for X by doing that. So we just, we just do that. So then we have the integral from zero to X, I guess, one quarter comes out. DX equals 0.45, just divide by two. And then we just have one quarter X equals 0.45, right? And then I think we get X equals 1.8. My memory is right. It's also in front of me. Yes, there it is. So that's the value of X. So we know that, you know, the probability that, or yeah, the probability, yeah, the value of X. So the probability that the output of X is between negative 1.8 and 1.8 is 0.9. And there we go. That's that. And there's only one solution for that. We have that. Okay, again, I'll keep going. So question, oh no, we didn't do expected value. So the expected value, where's our expected value? It didn't tell us to find the expected, is there an earlier question? Oh yeah, earlier question told us to find expected value. I didn't do that. So let me, let me do that quickly. I just realized, cause I remembered some question told us to do expected value. To find the expected value, we just do, well, we just basically do X times F of X for all the values here, right? So let me just write that here. For a discrete one, sorry, kind of jumping back and forth there. But this, we, we add together X times F of X for all the possible values of X. So the possible values of, of X are at here, here, and here, right? Those are three possible values. And the jumps are a third each time. So it's one eighth, sorry, yeah, one eighth times a third plus one quarter times a third plus three eighths times a third. So these values are the, oops. These values are the X values, right? And then it's a third, the, the jump is a third each time. So it's, these values are the F of X values. I guess I should have done that in yellow to match the graph. There you go. So the colors correspond to these two things. Okay, just realized I didn't do that. So back to this question, we are now looking for this one here. So we want to find the expected value of X. The expected value of X, the variance of X and the expected value of X squared. Yeah, okay. So the expected value of X, again, well, okay, so here we have our, we just have a formula basically for the expected value of X. So the expected value of X is just always going to be the integral from negative infinity to infinity. Yeah, the integral of negative infinity to infinity of X times, X times F of X. Yeah, DX. Yeah, that's the, that's the value. And here, what's going on with that? Oh yeah, yeah, that makes sense. So now our bounds are not negative infinity to it. This is the general form. This is always true, right? But we just want to go from negative two to two, because that's all our X values actually range. And we know our function, it's X over four DX. And then you can do this integral and you can find that it's zero, basically. There we go. We find that that integral is zero. So the expected value of this distribution is zero. And then the variance of X, right? The variance of X is the same integral basically. So it's the integral from negative infinity to infinity of X squared F of X. Minus the, yeah, my, or no, no, sorry, that's right. That is right. And then we will do this. So then we have negative, the integral from negative two to two. I'm sorry, is this right? I think I have to subtract mu squared here. I forget now. I always forget if I have to subtract mu squared or not. Let me take a look. Oh, also something I forgot to mention, I guess, makes sense now to mention. I have notes on this course, which is what I'm looking at now. So if you want my notes for this course, I'll put it at the top of the PDF too. So notes are available on my website, www.simpor.ca/notes. And you can find, I have empty four 10 notes there on everything we talked about. So yes, to find the variance, yes. I, it's, it's minus the expected value squared. I just didn't do that. It's supposed to be a DX here, minus the expected value squared. That's zero, so it doesn't really matter, right? But just to be correct, it is supposed to be there. So now I just have to integrate X squared over four DX. And then I just, you know, we find that this is four everything, right? We have that there. Yeah, that's that. That's, that's the, that's the variance there. I mean, if you just evaluate that integral. So now we have to find the expected value of X squared. Oops, the expected value of X, oops, X squared. And that's basically, there's a formula for this, right? So the expected value of X squared is the variance of X plus the expected value of X squared like this. And where's that come from? Let me find it in my notes here. I have it written somewhere. Basically. I lost it. Expected value, expected value of X squared. I think it comes from, yeah. So basically, it comes from the fact that the, the variance of X is equal to the expected value of X squared minus the expected value of X squared. This is, this is true because of the definition. This is like just from, straight from the, straight from the nodes. This is kind of how you do it, right? So remember, expected value is just X times F of X. So we have that the variance of X, which is sigma squared, is equal to this right here. This, right, is the expected value of X squared, sorry, X squared. And we're subtracting the expected value of X, that quantity squared. And that's the variance. So we can just rearrange this to figure out the expected value of X squared like this, to, to this formula. And then we know all these numbers. So this is just four over three plus zero squared, which is four over three. So hopefully that makes sense where that came from. Okay, there's that. Let's move on. Part C. Calculate the cumulative distribution function of X. Sure. So the cumulative distribution function of X is going to be, well, okay. So let's just define first of all, the probability density function. So the probability density function is piecewise defined, right? So from when X is less than, less than negative two, it's just zero. When X is greater than two, it's also zero, right? Then, yeah, then when X is between, between negative two and two, we have that it's equal to one quarter, right? So turning this into the cumulative distribution function, right? We just want to basically integrate from zero to, well, from negative infinity to infinity, right? So the cumulative amount that, we're integrating basically, that's, that's pretty much all it is. So if I integrate this from, I guess, how should I write that? If I, so the way, the way it works, let me just show you the, I guess, the answer. And then we can talk about how to get there. So if you think about the probabilities being added together in this graph, right? Then here, you know, up from negative infinity all the way to here, it's just going to be zero. No probabilities have accumulated in this section. So it's definitely zero in our cumulative distribution function, which is X is greater than zero, or X is less than zero. Then after positive two, after positive two, we have, there's no new ones being added. This is already an area of one, right? This is an area of one. So it's certainly one after this. X is greater than two, or yeah, X is greater than two. It's supposed to be negative two here. So before negative two, we have no probabilities accumulated. After two, we have all of the probabilities accumulated. So it's just one there. Then in the middle here, well, it's just the integral from negative two to X of one quarter DX. And that's, that's the area that we've accumulated when X is between these. We don't know where exactly X is, but whatever the integral is, the area under this curve between, I guess, this might, the, the value X here might be a little confusing to see. So let me erase that. But yeah, we don't know exactly where X is, but while it's in this interval between negative two to two, I guess inclusive, yeah. It's going to be just that integral there. And so there we go. You could do the integral if you want to, doesn't really matter. So yeah, that is all of question two. That's the whole thing. So no, happy to answer any questions. Feel free to use the chat or unmute. Problem three, suppose that we have these values. Suppose that A given B is 0.4 and the probability of A given not B is 0.2 and probability of B is 0.2. Find the probability of not B, this is very easy. Probability of not B is one minus the probability of B, which is equal to one minus 0.2, which is 0.8. That was nothing crazy there. Probability of A is a little bit more complicated. So this is where we use that formula that might be a little, a little confusing, right? So probability of A is basically the, the probability, was, how's it written again? Yeah. Probability of, how do they write it? Yeah. Probability of A given B times the probability of B plus the probability of A given not B times the probability of not B. Now let me explain what's going on here a little bit, right? So basically, the probability of A, if, if I actually just get the graph open, it's probably the best to do that. I'll, I'll find that here quickly. So there's a nice picture that's helpful here. So the probability of A, I guess this is a little bit, this is a little bit backwards. So let me, let me actually, it might be confusing to see. I'll just draw it, because the, the letters are backwards in that picture, so. We have some big set B, right? This is some big set B. Actually, let's just make it so big that it goes off the screen, right? So this is the set B over here, right? And then we have a set A that looks like this, right? So we can talk about A, the area of A. A is the part of A that's inside B. We can split into this, the part of A that's inside B and the part of A that's not in B. And that's the entirety of A. And so probability works a lot like the area. So the probability of A is the probability of A given that B happened plus the probability of A given that B didn't happen. And so we, we kind of, this is kind of what it is like this, right? So this is the probability of A and B and this is the probability of A and not B. And we add those two together, because again, you can think about A as all of the area of the circle that's in B plus all the area of the circle that's not in B. That's one way to think about it, which is helpful in certain situations such as now. So we can find these values. Do we know all these values? Yeah, we do know all these values, because this is 0.4 times 0.2 plus 0.2 times 0.8. And type that in and we get 0.24. So it's very useful to like partition the set into two different sets. So we partition A into two smaller sets. And again, since the probability works a lot like area, it works out. So, okay, that's it for part B there. Let's move on to part C. Part C is find the probability of B given A. Okay, this is not too bad. So the probability of B given A is, well, okay, so let's start with what we know, right? We know the probability of A given B, right? Is equal to, we know the number. And we know that it is equal to, actually, let's just do it like this actually. So the probability of B given A, which is what we're trying to find, right? Is equal to the probability of B intersect A divided by the probability of A. No, did I do that backwards? Maybe A given B. B given, no, yeah, this is right, I think. B given A. Let me check my notes, but I think this is pretty sure this is the right formula.
I think that's right.
That's right? Okay, sounds good.
And since it's intersection, B and A can be in either direction.
Yeah, exactly, right? So this is the same thing as the probability of B given A, which is the, I guess I could just write it here. This is the same thing as the probability of A intersect B divided by probability of A. And A intersect B, I can write as the probability of A given B times the probability of B divided by the probability of A. And I know all these numbers, so I can just type this down in now. So this is 0.4 times 0.2 divided by, is that what we know? Oh, probability of A, do I not know probability of A? I do know, I just found it here, 0.24. There we go. Yeah, and that's 0.3 repeating. This formula here, probability of B given A equals probability of A given B times probability of B over probability of A. This is actually a very useful formula. This is Bay's theorem, which is something that we skipped in the course for whatever reason. And it's like a way to convert between B given A and A given B. And it's very useful in a lot of situations. So probably worth it. I have a section in my notes about it. So it's probably worth it to just know this formula. Again, it's just useful to convert between B given A and A given B in a situation. So if you know these other probabilities, you can do that. So yeah, it's called Bay's theorem. Okay, that is all for part C. Let's see, part D. We want to determine if A and B are independent events. Well, the best way to do this is to think about if A and B are independent events, then the probability of A given B is just the probability of A, right? Because what we're saying here is that the, the fact that we know B happened, it didn't affect the probability of A. That means they're independent. That means they don't affect each other, right? So probability of A given the fact that B happened is the same as the probability of whatever A is. Those are independent events. But this is not true. Probability of, of A given B is 0.4, right? Probability of A given B, we, we found was 0.4. And yeah, 0.4, and then probability of A was 0.24. So they are not equal, they're not equal, so they are dependent. They are, yeah, they are dependent events. Okay, there is that question? Chat open. Question four. Question four is. A continuous random variable X follows a normal distribution with a mean of 60 and a standard deviation of 10. Find X such that this. So we want to find, we have the equation P X is greater than X equals 0.841. Well, first of all, we want to, we don't like writing X is bigger than some number. We want to write X is smaller than some number. So this is one minus the probability that X is less than X equals 0.841, which, you know, after a little bit of rearranging, you get this is one minus 0.841, which is just 0.159. Yeah. So it's just in a better form now, right? X is less than, you always kind of want to see X is less than some particular value, equal some probability. And so now what we want to do is we, we would like to look on the table, right? Well, we'd like to have a look on a table to figure out, right? What this value is. But with the normal distribution, right? We don't have a table for every single combination of mu and sigma. So the way we do this is we convert this to a standard normal distribution. So the way you do this is, is you just say, okay, now this is the same, this will be the same probability as probably that Z, the standard normal distribution, is less than X minus mu over sigma equals 0.159. And now I can look on the table, right? Now I can look on the table to find what this number is. And then I'll, well, let's just do that first. So I gotta open the textbook. Oops.
So it has to be in that Z is less than form to check the table, right?
It has to be in Z is less than, yeah. Okay, so I have the textbook opening, just give it a second. Okay, there we go. And then. What am I looking for? Table A, I mean, table three, okay. So we're looking for 0.159. So 0.159 is, 0.159 here, 0.158655 is the closest we're going to get, which is negative one. Yeah, negative one. So you see, I, I found the probability and it's a Z score of negative one, negative 1.00. So we find that net, that X minus mu over sigma equals negative one. That's the, that's the, the Z value that gets this probability. But that's not the X value, right? So that's, that's the thing. We have to account for this. So we know the mu and the sigma. So it was, mu is 60 and sigma is 10. So it's X minus 60 over 10 equals negative one. And so X minus 60 equals negative 10. X equals negative 10 plus 60. X equals 50. And there we go. There's our, there's our value there. X equals 50. So that is the, the X value that has the probability that X is. So that is the, the X value that has the probability that X is greater than 50 has a probability of 0.841 with this particular normal distribution with the, you know, this standard deviation, this meat up there. Okay, that's that. So let's take a look at five. I mean, I mean, B, it says five points, that's why I call it five. B? Um, so probability that X is less than 100. This isn't too bad, right? So the probability that X is less than 100, I don't want to say 200, 110 is um, well, we can't look this right on the table, right? So you, whenever we do this with like, continue it with um, discrete random variables, you would just look at the, like, you just like uh, add together a bunch of probabilities and stuff like that. But we can't do that with a normal distribution. The integral is not possible to compute, so we have to convert to the table. And so the table only does Z scores, right? So we, we have to convert this to Z is less than 110 minus mu over sigma. Right? That's the same probability. The point is that that's the same probability. Um, and, and then we know this value, right? So this is Z is less than 110 minus 60 over 10. Um, and so that's the probability that Z is less than um, 50, so five, I guess. There you go. Um, yeah, Z is less than five. And well, what we have here, this is what you look on the table for. We're gonna try to look for five on here, but you see, you're gonna notice that it only goes up to 3.9. And the reason is because it's basically 1 after 4. Four and over, it's basically 1, so we just call it 1. So it's basically 100% chance that it'll be, uh, Z will be less than 5. So yeah, there's that, that's the whole thing. So with this one, uh, find, this next one here is find the expected value of X minus 60 over 10 squared. Well, this, this isn't that crazy because it's just find the uh, expected value. Uh, well, what is that? That, that's just the, the standard normal variable squared, right? Uh, standard normal distribution squared. Um, and then here, oh yeah, this value is equal to, right? So remember from before, I said the variance of X equals the expected value of X squared, sorry, X squared minus the expected value of X squared, right? That's a, that's an important thing. So with, with Vs, with Zs instead, I mean, right? With Zs instead. Um, we're looking for this value, right? So this is just going to be, uh, so we're just gonna say the expected value of Z squared is equal to uh, the variance of Z plus the expected value of Z squared, like that. So I guess I don't need to write that anymore. Just put this, put this here. Uh, the variance of Z is 1 and the expected value of Z squared is, of Z is 0. That's the definition, like, that's part of the definition of the standard normal distribution. Is that it's variance of 1, expected value of 0. Uh, so this is just 1. So don't really explain in the solution, so. Okay, that is that. Let's take a look at problem five. These are the circuit, this is like one of those circuit questions. Which is fine. So the following circuit operates if and only if there is a path of functional devices from left to right. Assume devices fail independently and that the probability of failure of each device is as shown. So these are the probabilities of failure. What is the probability that the circuit does not operate? So you want to give each event a label. So I like to label it as like A and then B1, B2, C1, C2, and D. Right, it's just a good labeling for all them. And the probability that the circuit does not operate is if there are no paths from left to right. So we want the probability that um, A fails, right? And also B fails. I'll just call this, this like conglomerate B here. Call that B for a second. I'll, you know, we can decompose that a little bit more, but let's just for now call that B and call this C. So we want the probability that A fails and B fails and C fails and D fails, right? So that's why we're intersecting all of these events. You want the probability that all of these things happen. Um, these are independent. So we can just take the product. It's the probability that A fails times the probability that B fails times the probability that C fails, times the probability that D fails. They're all independent, so we can just do that. Probably that A fails, we already know that. Probably that D fails, we already know that. So we just have to focus on these, this middle two. So the probability that, uh, it's gonna get a big expression, so I'm gonna write the equal sign here. So probably that A times now, the probability of B. The probability that B fails, write this here, is equal to the probability that B1 or B2 fails. So the little union is like an or here, right? So the probability that B1 or B2 fails, one of the two. Um, and we know from the, the formula for the union of two non mutually exclusive events. So we have, this is gonna be the probability of B1 plus the probability of B2. But you have to subtract the probability of B1 and B2 happening. So this is not 0. If this was 0, you could just ignore that, but this is not 0. This, since they are independent events, it's just a product. So this is just probability of B1 plus the probability of B2. And then we're gonna subtract the probability of B1 times probability of B2. Right? So they're, they are independent events, but they're not mutually exclusive events. Those are different things. If they were mutually exclusive, this would be 0. But they are not mutually exclusive. They can both fail, right? They can both fail. And so we're gonna subtract the probability of both there. So there we go. Expression's gonna get really big now, but it's probability of B1 plus the probability of B2 minus the probability of B1 times the probability of B2. And that is what our, um, that is what our, well, this. How about I just do it with a box? Like this turned into all this, that probability there. And it's gonna be the exact same thing for C, right? Exact same thing for C. So it's gonna be the probability, uh, probability, uh, times, big bracket, probability of C1 plus probability of C2 minus probability of C1 times C2, uh, prob, sorry, probably of C1 times the probability of C2 like that. And that's what probability of C turned into there. So there's that. And there's that. And then we just want to multiply the probability of D at the end. And we know all these probabilities, right? We know all of them. So at the end, you do all the work, 1.58404 times 10 to the negative 7. That will be your probability that the circuit does not operate. You know, once you type in all the numbers. I'm just not gonna do that because it's gonna take a while, but there you go. So yeah, that's a circuit question. They're not too bad. You just have to remember that mutually exclusive does not mean independent or other way around, I guess, for this question. So independent does not mean mutually exclusive. They don't mean the same thing. So independent just means that the probabilities, um, independent basically just means that like probability of B1 and B2 is just the product. Um, but mutually exclusive means that the probability of B1 or B2 is just the sum. Nothing additional. But we don't know that. Again, they are not, they are not mutually exclusive because B1 and B2 can fail at the same time. So yeah. Okay. Problem six, I think it's the last one. Never mind, there's seven questions, but almost there. So we have problem six. Problem six is there is a 15% probability that a computer component has a defect. Computer components are shipped in boxes of 5. If we assume that defective components are independent of one another, what is the probability that a box has only non-defective components? Uh, yeah, so let's take a look at this. I guess I'll scroll here. So we want the probability that a box has only non-defective components. 50% probability that a computer component has a defect. They are shipped in boxes of 5. So we have a, a box, right? With 5 computer components, right? If we assume that defective points are independent of each other, what is the probability that a box has only non-defective components? So um, I guess the way we'll do this, yeah. So I guess we'll say, uh, we'll do this as a random variable, right? So we're gonna say X is the number, the number of defective components in a box of 5, right? Uh, and X is binomial, right? With an N value of 5. And a probability of success, success being defective, of 0.50, right? As I guess P, just say P equals that. Um, yeah, that's basically that. That's, that's like, that's what it is. So now we just plug into the formula. So we're, well, I guess, sorry, what, what probability we're looking for? We're looking for probability that X equals 0, right? That there are no, uh, there are no defective parts. So this is going to be 5, just using the formula, 5 choose 0. It's gonna be 0.15 to the power of 0. And then as 1 minus 0.15 to the power of 5. Uh, yeah, which is 0.4437. Yeah.
And that's just the binomial equation?
That's just the binomial, that's just the formula for the binomial distribution, yeah. But that's all it is. Um, okay. That's it for part A, this whole thing. Let's look at part B. So what is the probability that at least nine box, at least nine out of 10 boxes have only non-defective parts? So um, we have, yeah. So we have a, we have another random variable here. Because we're not counting the same thing here. We're not counting the number of uh, computer components that are defective in a box. We're now counting the number of boxes that have only non-defective components. So why is the number of non-defect, of, of, sorry, of boxes with only non-defective components? So we're looking at, what's probably that at least nine out of 10 boxes? So we're looking at the probability that X, sorry, that Y equals 9 or the, or 10. Probably that Y equals 10, right? And um, yeah, that's it. You might, I mean, maybe you're thinking like, here I mentioned up here that the or is the sum, but you have to subtract the intersection. So the reason we don't subtract the intersection here is because um, a random variable cannot output two numbers. So the probability that Y is 9 and also Y is 10 is 0. So we don't have to include that. So we, we don't usually think about that, but um, yeah, that's why you can just add these probabilities together. Great, so that's what we're looking for. Um, so we do this just by, well, we gotta see, okay, is this binomial? It is binomial, right? So Y is binomial uh, with 10 trials. And the probability of success is the probability that we have non, only non-defective components, which is what we just calculated, 0.4437. Um, and yeah, that's it. So then we just say uh, 10 choose 9. And then it's P, so 0.4437 to the power of 9. And then it's 1 minus 0.4437 to the power of 10 minus 9, which is 1. And then we do the same thing for 10 choose 10. And then we have 0 up here. And you plug that into a calculator, you get 0.004. So there we go. We get 0.4% chance that we have nine out of 10 box, at least nine out of 10 boxes. So nine boxes or 10 boxes out of 10 have only non-defective components. There you go. Okay, so that is that. That is part B. I'll move on to part C. What is the distribution of the number of boxes tested until a box without defective components is found? So whenever you have something, you know, you want to figure out how many trials until success. That is geometric. In fact, this little thing is, is what I always look at to remember what counts what. So, you know, um, uh, if we're looking for a number of trials up through the first success, right? That's an important one. Number of trials until we get the first success, that's exactly what we have here. What is the number of boxes tested until a box without defective components is found, right? So that is the number of trials until first success, that is geometric. So it's definitely geometric. Right? Definitely geometric, um, because we're looking for the first success. And a success is only uh, non-defective components. The probability of that, the only component, the only parameter is P, which is, we, we know that 0.4437. We calculated that in part A, 0.4437. So it's geometric with a P value of 0.4437. This table is very helpful. I found it on Google Images. And uh, it just, it has all the things. If you're gonna use it, just, this should be a K instead of an M. That's the only difference for us. There we go. Uh, yeah, so that's that. That is all of question six. Let's do question seven. Uh, I gotta hide the answer. So we have question seven, part one. Choose exactly one answer in each of the following questions. So the number of rearrangements of the word calls. So um, if they were all random, if they're all different letters, it would be five factorial, right? Because you have five for the first choice and then four for the next one, 3, 2, 1. Um, but five, five, because there's five letters, right? Five, five letters here. But two of the letters are identical. So C A L L S, right? And C A L, I guess I'll draw a funny L. So one of them is like a weird L and one of them's an L. So C A L L S and C A L L S is the same word, right? I'm just drawing the weird Ls because to show the difference. This is the same word. So there's less options. And so you divide by the, how many of the repeating, the identical element there? So there's an identical element. There's an identical element, which is L, and there's two of them. So we divide by two factorial. Um, okay, so, so that's the answer. Part B is the answer. Um, okay, so number two. One of the following statements is incorrect. Determine which one. So the cumulative distribution function phi of the standard normal distribution is. So uh, we're looking at the cumulative distribution function. So not the like normal distribution like that. We're looking at phi, right? Which is the cumulative distribution function. And so we want to look at all these, you know, different parts of it, these features of it. So is it continuous? It is continuous because the normal distribution is a continuous, um, a continuous, uh, what's it called? Uh, probability distribution. So it is continuous, the, the cumulative one will also be continuous. Um, is it positive? Yeah, it goes from 0 to 1, right? It goes from 0 to 1. Um, is it increasing? Yeah, it goes from 0 to 1. So yes, and it's always, always increasing. Uh, but it's not symmetric around 0. There's no reason for it to be symmetric around 0. But that also wouldn't make sense because the Y value goes from 0 to 1, uh, and just up like that, right? I don't know exactly what shape it makes or anything like that, but basically, you know, imagine, imagine integrating this from 0 to X, right? Then the, the area only increases as you move, right? And so symmetric around, there's no reason for it to be symmetric around 0. The normal distribution, well, the standard normal distribution uh, is symmetric around 0, but not the cumulative distribution function. So uh, then number three is uh, if Y is 5X plus 10 and X is the binomial distribution with N equals da, 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 then the mean of Y is. So, so what you do this, whenever you have the random variable Y is a linear combination, right? Or a, like a, a linear function of X, right? Then the expected value, the mean, right? So the mean, which is the expected value of, of Y, right? Is just going to be the expected value of 5 times some other random variable plus 10. When it's linear like this, the, the expected value function is linear itself. So it's gonna be 5 times the expected value of X plus 10. Um, and the expected value of X, well, that's just um, the expected value of the binomial normal distribution with, uh, sorry, but yeah, binomial normal distribution. Not normal, so I keep saying normal for some reason. Binomial distribution with N equal to 10 and P equals 0.9. So to do that, the expected value is just N times P. So it's N times P plus 10. And this is 5 times 10 times 0.9 plus 10, right? Which is 5 times 9 plus 10, which is 55. Uh, so none of the above. And there's your answer. Okay. And that's it. That's the, that's the whole practice midterm. So that took about an hour, well, 50 minutes, I guess. But yeah, that, that's our practice midterm. So hopefully everybody's feeling okay with uh, all the stuff talked about here. It's not too crazy. This is a pretty, pretty okay midterm. pretty okay midterm. Yeah, I don't know if this one was in person or not. Probably was in person. Yeah, definitely was in person because the whole first page is like, you know, write your name and all that. So um uh maybe we'll have different question, I mean, we'll definitely have different questions, but maybe we'll have different difficulty questions. I'm not sure. Um, but yeah, so for now, that's that's that. So then let's, let's move on to the other part. I mean, unless anybody has any questions. Have the answer, but uh yeah, so again, MTH four ten questions chat, go ahead and ask there, or you can ask in the actual chat for the for the voice call because that's the thing on Discord now too, but otherwise I will move on to the practice problems for chapter four. Um, cause I haven't finished all of them and I'd like to finish them. So let's finish them together. So what have I gotten up to? What question did we finish? We did two point, four point two point nine is the last one we did. So let me find the next questions.
Next is four point three point one.
Okay, thank you. You're doing your job well. Four point three point one is over there. Oh, I scrolled somehow. Yeah, okay. So we have this. There we go. So suppose that the cumulative dense uh probability density function for some continuous, you know, probability density function. Uh, probability, probability distribution, continuous one, is uh one point five X squared between negative one and one. I think he did this problem in class. Determine the mean and variance of X. So the mean is the expected value, which is the integral from just by definition is the integral from negative infinity to infinity of X F of X. Sorry, DX, um which is just the integral from negative one to one of X times one point five X squared DX. Um, and this is just going to be uh integral from negative one to one of X times uh sorry, uh one point five X cubed DX, which is zero. So I'm pretty sure, case I'm, my math is wrong, but it's just zero. It's an odd function, so should just be zero. Yeah, that's the expected value. The variance, the variance of X is going to be the integral from negative infinity to infinity of X squared F of X, my uh DX. Whoops, DX minus um, well, the expected value of X squared. So this is just going to be uh the integral from negative infinity, sorry, from negative one to one of one point five X to the four, right, cause X squared times X squared DX minus zero squared, so just zero. Um, and then this is just going to be uh, well, uh, three, I think. My math might be wrong on that one. I think it's just three.
And you're uh, you're using continuous random variables like that's what you're using for your variance and stuff?
Yeah.
Okay.
Cause it's continuous. It says for, cause the range is, it's output, like this is the continuous thing, right? Uh, I'll just check this integral if that's right. I don't know. It's probably, probably wrong. So it's from negative one to one of one point five. Uh, yeah, yeah, it's definitely wrong. Yeah, what am I talking about? Uh, yeah. And if it, if it was X instead of X to the four, I think I'd be right, but it's not that, so I'm not right. Zero point six. Great. Um, perfect. So there's, there's that question. Uh, what's next? Yusuf is okay. You keep telling me the numbers or should I just pull them up myself or it's it's up to you?
I got you.
Okay, okay, thank you.
Four point three point three.
Okay, four point three point three. Uh, determine the mean and variance of the random variable in four point one point one. So four point one point one is uh this one. Uh, yeah, that's fine. Where is the pictures? Oops, somebody meant, there you go. So the mean and the variance, come on. Of basically E to the negative X. So we want to find the uh the expected value for which is the integral from, I'll just go right to negative one to one, or sorry, not negative one to one, from uh integral from zero to infinity of X times E to the negative X DX. Uh, that's the integral. Uh, but now we gotta do the integral. So I could do some limit stuff, I guess? That is the definition. I did get the definition right here. Uh, yeah. Okay, um, integrate my parts? Yeah, it's a great my parts. Okay, uh, since this is, I'll just, I'll just type it into a calculator. Um, but you would do integration by parts. That is what you would do to solve this question.
Let's see your lie at Adam.
Yeah, I'm okay. I'm okay. Uh, uh, how do I type in in the infinity? Maybe I just write that there. X E. I'll just do that. Negative X DX. Uh, one. There you go. Expected value is one. The variance of X is the integral from zero to infinity of X squared E to the negative X DX. Um, yeah, minus one squared, right? The expected value squared. Um, so again, it's just, it's again, it's just going to be integration by parts twice this time. So I'm doubly not doing that. So we'll just save it into here. Whoops, did not, that did not work. I was trying to do. X squared E to the negative X and then just uh, one, I guess. I guess that's two, so that's one. Okay, sure. I don't know. Uh, there's that. I guess I don't have a
Not zero?
You got zero?
Or is it? If that answers one and it's one minus one?
No, I think this is, I think this is, this is two.
Hmm.
This, cause I typed this whole, I typed this in, this whole thing in and I got one. So um, yeah. Yusuf, I, are you able to check the answers?
It's gonna take a minute, but yeah, I can do that.
Yeah, yeah, I don't like, pretty much just like uh yeah, take your time. It's fine. Just check and if I do it wrong, then just tell me.
Okay, four point five three is next.
Four point five three?
Yeah.
Three. Yeah. Four point, oops, four point five point three. There we go. So uh assume that X is normally distributed with a mean of ten and a standard deviation of two, determine the following. Great. So uh Z is less than thirteen. Uh, this is one. That's just kind of a, that's like, yeah. That's, that's not really that uh there's no X here. Basically, that's what I'm trying to say. There's no X here. It's Z is less than thirteen, which is the standard normal distribution. Uh, which is the fact that it probably that's less than thirteen is one. Anything that's less, if it's the probability that's it's less than four or above, it's one. That's, that's basically it. Um, B, probably that Z is greater than nine. Well, probably that Z is greater than nine is one minus the probability that Z is less than nine. Probably that Z is less than nine is one. So there's one minus one, which is zero. The same reasoning that this is one because again, it's just so high that definitely you will fall below that. I mean, it's zero point nine 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 for a long time, so we just call it one after four. Um, okay, C is probably now we have actually X here. So probably that six is less than X is less than fourteen. Well, we gotta convert this to um standard normal distributions. So we know the mean and the standard deviation. So you uh subtract the mean, which was ten and divide by the standard deviation. So we're just basically turning this into said and Z values. They're called Z scores. So here we have fourteen minus ten divided by two. So these like, you know, subtracting the mean divided by the standard deviation. This is called the Z score of the of like six, like the si- six is Z score is this. And it's basically just like, what do you look up on the table to find that probability? Um, so this is negative two and this is two. Right? Um, and uh, yeah. I think I actually already know the answer to this one, but anyways. So this is just gonna be the probability that um Z is less than two minus the probability that Z is less than negative, oh, sorry, wait, hold on. Yeah, minus probably that is less than negative two. Yeah, that makes sense to me. And we just look at the table for these values. Um, so I'll just do that quickly. Uh, where is it? Table three. So negative two and two are uh negative two is zero point two two, zero point zero two two seven five. Zero point zero two two seven five and then positive two is down here. So zero point nine seven seven two five. Seven, seven, two, five. And then that's just something you type into a calculator. Zero point nine seven seven two five minus zero point zero two two seven five. So nine, five, uh, zero point nine five four five. There's a probability. Next, we have um probably that X is between two and four. Um, it's gonna be pretty much the same thing after all this. Uh, all these examples will be pretty much the same. You just do the Z score and then um split it up like that. Uh, is there any trick question here? I don't think so. Fourteen. Maybe some of those values wind up being one. Um, let's see, you know, so yeah. You're gonna say something or? Okay, no, good. Um
I was going to. What'd you get for C?
Uh, zero point nine five four five.
Okay.
Good? Checks out? Um, so, okay, I'll just skip the rest. I'll just skip D and E because it's the same thing again. You just did the same process. Good with everybody?
Yes, sir.
Yes?
Four point five point four is next.
Four point five point four? Um, thank you. We're being a good, good help. Um, so four point five point four is assume that X is normally distributed with a mean of, oh, didn't, oh, yeah, it's different. So determine the value for X such that the following, each of the following. So um uh same, same mean and same standard deviation, but we're just, it's different questions. So we want the probability that X is greater than little X is equal to zero point five. Well, immediately you gotta turn this into a Z score, right? So X is greater than X minus ten divided by two. Sorry, Z is greater than that equals zero point five. And the table is Z is less than some value. So this is one minus the probability that Z is less than X minus ten over two is equal to zero point five. After some rearranging, you will get this, just, yeah, you just get this by rearranging. And then uh now we go to the table and we try to find where zero point five, right? We try to find where zero point five is. So zero point five is zero. Exactly on zero. So we know that X minus ten over two equals zero, which means X equals ten. And that's our solution. Uh, yeah, that actually makes sense, so there you go. Great. That's part A. Part B, very similar question, but I'll still do it. Um, probably that X is greater than X is equal to zero point nine five. Uh, right away, I'll just say this is one minus probability that X is less than X equals zero point nine five. Probability that X is less than X equals zero point zero five. So now we switch it to a Z score. So Z is less than X minus ten over two equals zero point zero five. And we go on the table to find zero point zero five. Um, so zero point zero five is here, or I guess that's closer. So or is it closer? Yeah, it's closer. So it's negative one point six five. So X minus ten over two equals negative one point six five. So X minus ten equals negative three point three? Is that right? Yeah, negative three point three. Uh, X equals ten minus three point three. X equals six point seven. There's that?
Yeah.
Checks out? Yeah.
One of the things he does a lot, which I'm like considering if it makes sense to do, is once he gets to the point where it's like Z is less than or equal to whatever value, he usually puts it in terms of phi.
Uh, yeah, even for this question?
Yeah.
So you would say by
You'll say phi of X minus ten over two instead of like P of Z. It's the same thing.
It is the same thing, yeah, yeah, yeah. Sure, yeah, yeah. I don't, I don't know if it matters. I don't know how much the notation matters to him. It is the same thing, right? If I write here, I could write phi, or that's not a phi. Oh my god, phi. Um, X minus ten over two, yeah, equals zero point zero five. Yeah.
And that's more to like F or the CDF, but in terms of normal distribution, right?
Yeah, 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 it is similar. So
Okay.
I don't know. That's, that's that. Uh yeah. Okay, I don't know. That's, that, that's that. C is um C is probability, I guess, how many should of these should I do? I guess that one looks kind of interesting. Let's do this one.
I was gonna say E. Looks kinda nice.
Okay, let's do E. So uh, well, it's a little big. So E is, we have the probability that all this stuff. So I'll, right away, how should we do this? I guess right away I'll split it up into no, right away I'll just do the Z score thing. That X minus ten. Um, does, does it make sense to say this is the same thing as probability of X plus ten? X less than X plus ten? I think that does make sense. I think I am allowed to do that. Equals zero point nine nine to get X alone. Yeah, I think I am allowed to do that. So just add ten to everything, all sides, so that it's just X here. Now it's a lot easier. So we converted to Z score. So it's uh negative X plus ten minus, and then we subtract the mean and divide by standard deviation. So minus ten over two, less than X or capital X, less than X plus ten minus ten divided by two equals zero point nine nine probability. And then now we have um negative X over two. As we said, yeah, as we said, thank you. Uh, X over two equals zero point nine nine. There we go. Okay. Um, so now we need to figure out what value this is, right? Uh, very similar. We had something very similar to this on, on the homework. So to do this, the way I did it, the way I did it is uh to say, whoops, to say um uh, this is our standard normal distribution. That's zero, right? Um, so, okay, let me explain the issue first. So if if I were to just jump right into probability that that uh, you know, X, I guess it's Z is less than X over two minus the probability that Z is less than negative X over two equals zero point nine nine, which would work. This is true. I have two expressions with with X in it. And that's annoying. It's harder to solve for X here. So the way that I approach doing this one is to look at this and say, okay, well, I have my standard normal distribution. And this is zero here. Um, then I have some negative X over two and I have some X over two, right? And I wanna know uh, oops, this probability, right? I wanna know this probability. Well, that probability is two times, two times this probability. Okay, my, my drawing is a little bit asymmetrical, but it's supposed to be symmetrical, right? So that's two times this probability. What is that probability? That probability in there is the probability that Z is less than X over two minus the probability that Z is less than zero. That's that little blue probability and I just multiply that by two. And that's the same thing. Zero point nine nine. Equals zero point nine. And the reason this is helpful is because I only have one term with X in it. We have one term with X in it. So now to solve, I can just say probability that Z is less than X over two um equals zero point nine nine over two plus probability that Z is less than zero. And this is just a number that like it doesn't have X in it here. That's just a number. Um, which I'll just, I don't know, I'll just find. And so zero point nine nine divided by two plus the probability that Z is less than zero. Probably Z less than zero is zero point five. So zero point five. So I get uh zero point nine nine five. Uh, yeah. Uh, that's probably that Z is less than X over two. So now I just gotta go to the the table and find zero point nine nine five. Uh, which is, was nine nine five? Sorry. Yeah, nine nine five. So nine nine five is uh there. So it is two point fifty eight. So X over two equals two point fifty eight. So X equals two times that, uh, uh, five point sixteen. Uh, is that the right answer? Yusuf, do you know if that's the answer?
Yep, that's the answer.
Okay, good, sounds good. Okay, good, sounds. Okay, yeah, there's, there's that.
Next up is four point six point one.
Four point six point one, thank you. Four point six point one is here. We have a lot of questions left?
An infinite amount more.
Infinite amount more questions, okay. Uh suppose that X is a binomial random variable. Or, oh, binomial random variable with approximate, oh, this is approximations. We didn't cover that. He didn't cover approximations.
Next up.
Next up.
Four point six point two. Do we do that?
Exact, well, we can do the first part, we can do the first part. It's, it's also approximation, but like the first part is just do a Poisson random variable, so we may as well. So suppose X is a Poisson random variable with lambda equal to six. Compute the exact probability X is less than four. So if they ever give you lambda equals six. Really what they mean is lambda T equals six. That's how we have it in our notes. Lambda T, um other textbooks just call lambda. Um or in other words, they just assume that T is one i- in that case. Um so it pretty much, very easy, this just assume is T is one. That's the best way to, to, to phrase it. Um so probably that X is less than four, X is less than four. Um is equal to, probably X is, sorry, X is less than four. Is, we, we, we would just do probability that X equals zero. Plus probability that X equals one. Plus probability that X equals two, plus probability that X equals three. That's it. Um and then for each of these, it's E to the negative lambda. And then lambda to the X divided by X factorial, right? That's the, that's the formula for Poisson distributions. Um so it's just a zero here and zero here and then you just do this a bunch of dick, you just keep doing this. I guess lambda is six, right? So we have six, six here for us. And then you just repeat this a bunch of times. So it's one, one and, you know, plus da da da. The reason I just wanted to say this question is just cuz it's Poisson. And then also like, why is lambda equal six? Well, it's lambda T, but we just say lambda sometimes. Okay, that's fine. I'm, I'm fine ending there. I mean, we don't have to type this into a calculator. It's just basically a lot of typing.
Four point six point five.
Four point six point five. Is um. That's fine, I think, yeah. This is, this is okay. Four point six point five is good. Oh, no, no, sorry, approximate each of the following. Uh we could do this anyways, like it doesn't matter. It's like a Poisson distribution.
Let's write through and see out of the other ones what we can do.
Sure. Probably a lot of four point six will be not valid to do.
Yeah, four point six point eleven.
It, it says approximate, right? So, yeah.
Four point seven point one.
Why, that actually doesn't make sense to even be there because we haven't done four point seven. Like four point seven is not even included in the course at all.
Okay, but I think it's only up to four point five that we.
Four point five, yeah, that's true. Okay, let's do this Poisson one. And we won't approximate, we'll just do the actual values. We'll just find the actual, actual numbers. And then, yeah, then that's, that's less questions than I would have expected. So we can do um, we'll do something else after. We'll figure it. So uh for four point six point five hits to a high volume website. Are assumed to follow a Poisson distribution with a mean of one thousand per day. Uh approximate each of the following. So a mean of one thousand per day. Uh not lambda T, but just lambda, just that. So the probability of more than twenty thousand hits in a day. So let X equal uh the number of hits. Of hits. Um in a day, I guess, in a day. Um then we're looking at the probability that X is greater than. Twenty thousand. Um so that is equal to, um, oh, hold on. Probably that. More than twenty thousand hits in a day. Okay. So this is, well, one minus probability that X is less than twenty thousand. That'd be a lot of adding, if we had to do that. So. We could. I have a feeling it's to do with the fact that it's approximating. And they want us to. Let me check my notes quickly. I have a feeling there's a way to approximate this using an integral and that is not something we talk about.
Alright, let's move back.
Yeah.
There are a few good questions earlier on, on the chapter four stuff.
Yeah.
That you like highlighted.
Yeah, there is a way to approximate this using. Using an integral and that is not something we do. Okay. Uh yeah, there are other questions that we did before that are good. I basically highlighted only a few, but let's do them. It's fine. Alright, just redo some of them. For example, uh there was one that was good here. Yeah, this is, this is, this one was good. So three point seven point six was a good question. So a state runs a lottery in which six numbers are randomly selected from forty without replacement. So a player chooses six numbers before the state sample is selected. So we have a, you know, a whatever, a basket of sixty numbers. Everybody just chooses six, both replaced, oh sorry, without replacement. Yeah. You choose whatever numbers you want, right? You choose whatever numbers you want and wanna put in there. Um you would do it without replacement, I guess. And then they have a lottery where they have the correct six numbers. Um and then this last line, a player chooses six numbers before the state sample is selected. It's just like. You, you choose your numbers before you know the answer, which is obvious. Um so what is the probability that the six numbers chosen by a player match all six in the state sample? So like, you know, assuming that's what it means to win the lottery, is that you match all six numbers? What is the probability of that happening? Um so let's do that. So we'll say let. Let X denote. Denote, I guess I'll just type the rest. The number of matching uh values between the player. Player and the state numbers. I get the player numbers. And the state numbers. So essentially, how you wanna think about this is like, we have a set of forty numbers where we pick without replacement. And there are six of them which are labeled the correct numbers. Order doesn't matter in these ones. You don't, the order of the numbers isn't. So there are six of them which are the correct numbers. Um and so if we look back up at our table. I guess I'll look. Get it from Discord today. Oh, okay, I got it. But thank you Kia for the question. I will take a look at that for sure. So here we have, uh, oh yeah, I put this here. So if we look at this table. Uh number of marked individuals in sample taken without replacement. So marked individuals is the correct ones. Those are the correct ones, right? So we have six correct ones in this sample of forty. So we just, it's gonna be a hyper geometric distribution. So we have K, capital K, we have capital N. We have lowercase n. So capital K is the number of correct ones. So there are six correct ones. I think, yeah, there are six correct ones. There are forty in total and the player is choosing six. Right? And so the uh probability uh mass function for this. Thing is just going to be, well, it's just going to be uh F of X. Equals uh six choose X. Six choose X. There you go. Um and then it's going to be, uh remember it's supposed to be a K here for all these. So it's going to be forty minus six or thirty, oh sorry, alright, forty minus six choose uh six minus six or six minus X, I guess. Um divided by. N over two, so forty over six. There we go. So the probability, if we wanna say the number of matching values between the player and the state numbers, well, we just want the probability. That X equals six, right? We want for the, for part A, what is the probability that all six match? So this is just F of six, which is some number. I forget what number. I didn't write it down. I don't know, just plug, oh sorry, all six, yeah, all six numbers match, it's just gonna be F of six, whatever that is. Uh for part B, it's, what is the probability that five of the six numbers? And for part C, it's, what is the probability that four of the numbers match? So that's just probability that X equals five, which equals F of five. And C is the probability that X equals four, which is just F of four, right? Then uh so that's, I mean, you could, we could type it in, but I guess just, just gonna type into calculator. Um then part D is if a player enters one lottery each week, what is the expected number of weeks? Until a player matches all six numbers in the state sample. This is the good, this is the good part of the question. So if the player enters. One lottery each week, what is the expected number of weeks until the player matches all numbers in the state sample? So here, we're not counting the number of matching values anymore. We're counting the number of weeks. So we have a new random variable, right? Random variable Y is the number of weeks. Weeks until success. Right? So what is the probability of success? The probability of success is, you know, whatever we said, probably that. X equals six, that we match all six, which was F of six, which again is some number that I haven't calculated. And all we want, we don't need the actual function for this random variable. We just need the expected value of this function. We just need the expected value of Y, right? Uh Y, oh yeah, I just have to say, Y is uh geometric, right? Geometric. Because it's the number of weeks until the first success and that's the definition of what geometric is. Number of trials up through the first success. The probability of success is this, so it's geometric with this probability. And then the expected value of a geometric distribution is one over the probability. And I guess I calculated that the probability is uh two point six times ten to the negative seven, that this is two point six. Times ten to the negative seven. Right? And so the answer was like three million weeks or something like that, approximately. Forget the number, three, approximately three million weeks. Right? Which is a long time. So if that's the prob, if that's what the lottery is, then it'll take approximately three million weeks to, to get it. That's the expected number. Of weeks until success. Okay, there's that. That's that question done. Um so I, I have some more questions, so we can do some more. Let's see what else is of interest to do uh that, that he hasn't done.
I know uh Kia said one in the chat.
Yes, Kia said one in the chat, I forgot about that. So let's take a look at this question and he said, if there's time at the end, you just want mainly part B and D. So let's just take a look at the whole thing, but. Uh draw a random sample, random sample mean. Oh yeah, random sample mean. This is actually, this is stuff. That's later anyways, like this is statistics, right? So when you have, when you have X bar and stuff like that, uh is a random, that's like, that's for stuff after the midterm, basically. Um so uh like, yeah, it's statistics. So we can take a look at it. But it isn't actually relevant to the, to the midterm. We won't be asked a question where we have a random sample mean. Draw a random sample mean of size. So um yeah, I mean, I, let's like, wh- what would it be anyways if I look through it? E of X, random sample mean. Yeah. I would have to change the question to be actually relevant to us, so yeah. Is that fine that we, we don't do this one? It just could because it's, it's statistics. It's not, we're still on probability, right? Yeah, okay, sounds good. Uh well, so then I, let's see, what's the next question to uh, to uh, to do? Uh let's see, I, there were some interesting ones. Lab questions. Are there any lab questions that we could do that aren't covered by the, the ones that are there in practice? Let's see, let's do the. Video game one. Um yeah, let's see here. We have uh labs. I guess I could say. Or what's the? Lab problems there. So how many of the lab problems are ones that we've already done? I don't know, probably not that many. Four point, four point one, yeah, that's pretty much it. Okay, so we've done all of the. Chapter two, three and four practice. We've done the practice midterm. I could look online, see if I have any other previous midterms. I could do that. Let's see. Oops, gotta hide that. So let's see. Gotta find it, there it is. So I will just check if there are any others. Anybody else has any other questions? Yeah, yeah, okay, I have lots of other midterms. So let's try. Let's try this one. Yeah, okay, let's try this one. I have a bunch of other midterms, so we can try it. Um this is from. Some year, I don't know. So problem one. Smartphone repair company. Received ten dysfunctional. Uh assume they come to repair. Yeah, okay. So a smartphone repair company received ten dysfunctional iPhones and twelve dysfunctional Samsung Galaxy phones. Assume that the company will repair only six devices that are randomly selected, calculate the following probabilities. So what's the probability that three iPhones and three Samsung Galaxy phones will be repaired? So for, for this is just more of a counting problem, right? So we want the total number of possible outcomes, right? Which is going to be, well, we have twenty two phones in total. And we wanna pick six of them. So that's the total number of possible outcomes. And we want three iPhones and three Samsung Galaxy phones. So and is a multiplication. So we have uh ten iPhones and we wanna pick three of them. And we have twelve Samsung Galaxy phones and we wanna pick three of them. So that will be, that will be our probability there. Zero point three five eight three. We don't have enough information for other things, so that's basically that. Um so let's take a look at the next part B. Part B, oops. At most, what's the probability that at most one Samsung Galaxy's phone, Galaxy phone will be repaired? So uh yeah, so we have. At most one. So what is the probability that one will be repaired? Or zero will be repaired, right? Probability that one Samsung. Uh Sam, Samsung, uh plus probability, well, probably of. Zero Samsung. So both of these will have a denominator which is still twenty two choose six. Right, twenty two choose six because that's the total number of outcomes. So how many outcomes have only one Samsung? Well, these are the outcomes where you have the uh twelve, what, it was a ten? Yeah, ten iPhones and you pick five of them and uh twelve Samsung and you pick one of them. Or you have ten iPhones and you pick six of them. And you have twelve Samsung and you pick zero. And there's your two probabilities. Which added together is zero point four, zero point zero four three three. So again, I'll just, I'll explain this one again. So it's probably of one Samsung plus probably of zero Samsung. So probably of one Samsung is. Number of outcomes that have one Samsung divided by the total number of outcomes. So number of outcomes that have one Samsung is you have ten, you choose five of them. And twelve, sorry, ten iPhones, you choose five of them. And twelve Samsung, you choose one of them. And similarly here, but six and zero. Okay, there's that. So next. We have the cumulative distribution function of a continuous random variable X is given uh by this. Where A, B, C are constant numbers. Note, if you fail to do question A, continue, work on, da da da. Continue, calculate A, B, C. Uh sure. So it has to be continuous, right? So since it has to be continuous, it's a continuous random variable. So this has to be continuous. So if this has to be continuous, then uh the piecewise stuff has to work out. So it's A between uh when X is less than zero and uh up and, and then. When X is zero, it's X squared over two. So it's zero when X is zero, right? So when X equals zero, um F of X, F of zero has to be zero. So approaching from the left, it's A, so A must be zero. Right? A must be zero. Approaching from the right, it's zero as well. Right? So hopefully that makes sense. So we have, if I just draw the X axis here. So we have a zero, one and C. One and C is, I guess that just keeps going. Zero, one and C. So here, it has a value of A, right? I guess I'll say approaching from this side has value of A, approaching from this side has value of zero cuz X squared over two at zero is zero. So the, these have to agree. So A must be zero. And then approaching from this side, approaching from one, it's X squared over two, so it's going to be one over two, it's going to be one half. And then over here, it's X plus B, right? So this way, it's X plus B. So it's one plus B, approaching this way. So one half must equal one plus B. Right, so it's B must be one half minus one. Which is negative one half, so B must be negative one half. And then finally, at C here, right, approaching this way, it's X plus B, which is X minus a half. X minus a half, approaching this way. At C, so that's going to be C minus a half, this way, right? And then afterwards, it's one, so C minus a half must be equal to one. And so then C equals one plus a half. One plus a half, and then C equals three halves. So C equals three halves. So there's your A, B, C, it's really just a continuous function problem, that's, that's all it is. So it's just sort of seeing, how do you make a continuous function? So it has to, the limit from either side has to be the same. Okay, great, so then we just have here. Part B is evaluate probability that X is between zero point five and one. So this is just the probability that X is less than one, minus the probability that X is less than zero point five. Which is again, you just plug that into the formula. So less than one would be one, I guess it would just be, yeah, so this would be one plus B. So, so, so less than one. Is this section, so one plus B, but B is negative a half, so one minus a half. And then. Minus X is less than zero point five would be in this section, so that'd be zero point five squared over two. Uh, is that what they put? Yeah, that is what they put. And that's zero point three seven five. Great, let's continue. Whoops, that's the answer. Screenshot of the answer instead, okay. Find the density function, probability density function. Of, of this. Make sense? So the probability density function would be, well, you. You take the derivative. So we know that F of X for continuous random variables equals D F by DX. So we just take the derivative, I think. We say this is just going to be zero, this is going to be X, this is going to be X, and this is going to be zero. Does that make sense? Or is it gonna be one, actually, sorry, it's one. And this is going to be zero, for X less than zero, is that right? Yeah, that is right. Zero, these, these bounds don't change. And then this is one less than X, less than three halves. And then this is zero, X is greater. X is greater than equal to C. Or three halves, I guess, I'm just reading out the answer, but yeah. There we go. So it's just taking the derivative, it's just knowing this, this fact, basically, is the whole thing. So let's try the next one, next one we have is, find the expected value of X and the variance of X. So the expected value of X. Expected value of X. Is equal to the integral from negative infinity to infinity of X F of X, right? X F of X DX. But we can break this up into a bunch of parts, right? So from zero, from negative infinity to zero, it's zero, doesn't matter. Then from zero, so from the integral from zero to one. Of X F of X is just X times X DX, right? And then we're going to add the integral from one to three halves, which is one DX. And then after three halves is zero again, so that's all we have. So this is just going to be. X cubed over three evaluated from one to zero, or zero to one. Because X squared and add one six one divided by three. And then here we have X evaluated from three halves to one. So valued at one, this is one third. Minus zero, plus three halves minus one. So this is one third plus a half. Which is whatever, some, some, some number. Two six plus three, so five six. Is that right? Let's see. One quarter plus, oh no, they do something a little bit different. Oh, did I make a mistake on this? Oh, it's X times. Oh, no, no, I didn't, did I make a mistake? Yeah, I think I actually did make a mistake, this is actually not one, sorry, this is, it's X times F of X, it's not just F of X. So this is an X here, so this is X squared over two, so this is three halves. Well, okay, then, then there's a bunch of other things, right? So yeah, it's X times one here, not just X. So then here, this is three over two squared over two minus one squared over two. And then you just believe me, and then this is, this is zero point nine five. Eight three. Yeah, it's X times F of X, not just F of X. Variance is the expected, so variance of X. Is the integral from negative infinity to infinity of X squared F of X. DX minus zero point nine five eight three squared. Minus the expected value squared. So we do the same way, integral from negative. So from what, from. From negative infinity to zero, it's just zero. So then from zero to one. It's X squared times X DX. X squared times X, yeah, X squared times X DX. And then we want to add on the integral from one to three halves, which is X squared times one DX. And then subtract zero point nine five eight three squared. And that's some number, you know. And so we have here that this is going to be. Square times X. Yeah, yeah, it's actually, this is fine, so this is going to be zero point one two three four. Okay. That looks. Good. Just looking through the questions, see if there's any other interesting ones here. So let's take a look at. Take a look at this one. Evaluate the expected value of root X and the variance of root X. This isn't that complicated, right? So this is, it looks kind of complicated, but the expected value of root X. Equals the integral from negative infinity to infinity of root X F of X. DX. And it's the same process again, so we just say this is the integral from zero to one of root X times X DX. Uh, plus the integral from one to three halves of root X times one DX. And just believe me, this is zero point nine five eight one. Right, all that matters is setting this up, right? So i- if you just have a function, you just put the function there, that's all it is. And the variance, well, the variance of root X, one way you could do this is. The variance of root X, remember, is the expected value of root X, root X. Squared minus the expected value of X squared, right? That's, oh, so root X. X squared, right? And the reason this is helpful in this situation to say this, is because this is just the expected value of X minus. It's supposed to be capital X, I guess. Yeah, it's supposed to be capital X here too. Minus the expected value of root X. Squared, but the expected value of X, we already know, right? We put it here, zero point nine five eight three. Zero point nine five eight three minus zero point nine five eight one squared. So that would be the variance, it makes a little bit more sense to write it like this, you could do it as the integral and you'd get the same thing, it would just be the expected value of X. But since we already know that, it's worth it to just write it like this this time. Okay, so there's that. Problem three. Problem three. So an urn contains, why is it an urn? Okay, an urn contains five red balls and three green balls. Two balls are drawn one after another with replacement, what is the probability that the second ball is red? So the probability that the second ball is red. So we have, balls are drawn one after another. Okay, so the, the probably the second ball is red. So the probability, let's label something, so B equals the second ball is red. Second ball. And then I'll say. A. Equals. The second ball. Is not red, or sorry, the first ball is red, sorry. The first ball is red, I don't know what I was saying, the first ball is red. So we're looking for the probability of B. So the probability of B can be broken up into the probability of B given A, times the probability of A. Plus the probability of B given not A. Times the probability of not A. Right, again, this is kind of that thing where it's like, you break up into, B is. The probability that B happens, given that A happened, like, so the probability that you get a red ball, given that the first ball was red. Plus the probability that you get a red ball on the second try, given that the probability, given that the first ball was not red. And those are, those are like, those add up to the whole thing, that's the whole probability. Because that's the only option for A, A was either red or not red. So there we go, so probability of B, we have to find all these numbers now. So the probability of B given A, so. Let's find the probability of A first. Probability of A, right, probability that the first ball is red. So there are five red balls and there are eight to choose from. Okay. Probability of not A. Is you choose one of the three green balls. Probability of B given A, okay? So we're on the second try now, there are only seven balls to choose from, the first one was red, so there are only four red ones to choose from now. And probability of B given not A is, again, we're on the second try, oh sorry, with replacement, oops, so it's eight, eight out of four. I'm sorry, eight with replacement. I didn't even realize that, okay, so then with replacement means the ball was put back, so it's also five over eight. Right? Yeah, okay. So. With replacement means the ball was put back, so now we have, still have eight choices, and five of them are still red. Probably B given not A is also five over eight, so that should be fine, actually. Yeah, this is. Yeah, actually, we could have just jumped right to the answer, but. This is just going to be five over eight, the whole, you know, plugging all this in, it's just going to be five over eight. But that also makes sense, because the probability of B does not depend on, the probability of B does not depend on what happened in A. Because you just put the ball back, right? So if you have this set of five red balls and three green balls, and, you know, trial A is happening, where you take the ball, it might be red, it might be not, you put it back. It doesn't matter, because you put it back, so the second try will still have five over eight, it'll just be five over eight probability of B, so we didn't have to do all this. You could do all this and plug it all in, and you get five over eight, but we didn't have to do all that. Okay, let's try the part B of the question, this one looks more complicated, so this one I might get. Confused on, so let's, let's try our best here. So an urn contains five, oh, yeah. Okay, without replacements, so two, two balls are drawn one after another without replacement, what is the probability the second ball is red? Okay, so this is where, this is where this is relevant, I mean, it was relevant before, but this is where it's actually. Numbers that matter. I guess I'll just take it like. That, that I guess, that's fine. It's gonna be messy. Okay. Oh my god. So now these numbers are, these numbers up, up top are still correct, but these numbers are going to be different. Now, the total number of choices we have is seven, so probability of B given A. Probably the second ball is red, given the first one was red, so now we have seven choices, no replacement. So, and there's only four red balls, right? Probability of B given not A is, there's still seven choices, but there are still five red balls. And now you work this all out, this is going to be four over seven times five over eight, plus five over seven times three over eight. And. I can't work this out in my head. Five over fourteen plus fifteen over fifty-six. Whatever that is, some number. Five times, let me just check the answer, five over eight times four over seven, five over seven times three over eight, yeah, so the answer is just five over eight? Interesting. So it's the. Yeah, there you go, five over eight is the, is the answer for. Still five over eight, that's kind of interesting that it's still five over eight. That must just work out like that somehow, I don't know, that's definitely not always true, that it's the same, that we get same answer in both cases here, but yeah. Great, there is that question done, and that's all from this midterm, that's relevant. There's a, there's a circuit question, but I'm not going to do a circuit question, so. Unless people want to see a circuit question. We got a few minutes left, see if there's any other questions, I have a bunch of midterms here, so. Uh, let's see if this one's any good. Calculate. She was random variable. Oh, they reused the urn question apparently. Okay. Let's try this. Um, I don't know why, that's part B, okay, let's try this question. I haven't seen this question before. Suppose it has been observed empirically that the word congratulations occurs in one out of ten spam emails. But that congratulations only, what's the difference? Congratulations. Oh, no, sorry, there's no difference, it's the same thing. Occurs in one out of one thousand non-spam emails. Suppose it has been observed empirically that about four out of ten emails are spam. Suppose we get a new email that contains congratulations, what is the probability that this is spam? So we want the probability that, yeah, okay. So let me, you know, define a bunch of things. A equals the event that we get an email. That. Contains spam. Okay? No, sorry, we get an email that contains congratulations. No, no, sorry, we get, we get an email that is spam. B. Equals. The email contains the word. Congratulation. I can't spell congratulations. He's gonna correct me, there we go. So we know all these values, we know probability that an email is. An email is spam, given that it has. We're looking for probability that email is spam. Right? Oh no, sorry, given that it has the word. Suppose we get a new email, given that it has the word congratulations. So the probability that a, that an email. Contains the word congratulations, given that it is spam, is equal to one out of ten. The probability that the email contains the word congratulations, given that it is not spam. Is one out of a thousand. The probability that. The probability that an email is spam is four out of ten. Okay? We're looking for probability of A given B, I know probability of B given A, this is, this sounds like. Okay, and then probability of not A is six out of ten. Um, yeah, this should be fine. So this is equal, using Bayes' theorem basically, but if you want to just do this using. Basically, it's just good to know Bayes' theorem, it's really, we can just derive it very easily, but. Just knowing Bayes' theorem is very, very helpful, I have it in my notes here. Where are we? Uh, where's Bayes' theorem, here's Bayes' theorem. So that, that's gonna be, so Bayes' theorem would tell us that this is probability of B given A. Probability of A. Over probability of B. But like, yeah, this is, this is basically by definition. Probability of A intersect B, like, this is what we would use the formula that was taught to us in class. And then the addition is that we also know that this equals this, right? So you would just put this here. And it just saves you a little time if you know Bayes' theorem. Now, all these values. Okay, we don't know the probability of B, okay, okay, I think I know what to do. So probability of A. So probability of A given B equals, I know the top values, probability of B I don't know, but I can break up the probability of B. Probability of A, probability of B is the probability of B given A. Times the probability of A. Plus the probability of B given not A, times the probability of not A, right, again, you just break it up into two parts. And now I know all these values. So now my answer is one tenth times four over ten over, um, one tenth times four over ten. Plus one over a thousand times six over ten. Uh, let's check if that matches the answer. Where am I, here it is. Um. One, four over ten, one over ten, four over ten, one thousand, yep, that matches the answer, there you go, so, yeah, and that's zero point. Nine eight five, there we go. And that's that, that's the whole thing. That was a pretty good question, I liked that question, that was, that was good. And that's pretty much our time for today, so, uh, hopefully you guys, you guys, you guys appreciated the, uh, live, I feel it was helpful. Um, and if you have any more questions, feel free to let me know, but you know, if you have any questions before the midterm, uh, let me know, or even after the midterm, let me know. Um, and I'm happy to talk about it, um, and yeah, so that's it, that's our time for today, thank you guys for coming. Hopefully you enjoy your Sunday and, uh, good luck on the exam tomorrow, everything goes well. So I'll stay around for another minute, in case anybody wants to ask anything, but otherwise. That is all the content I wanted to cover for today.